Good evening. The Hillsborough Township Board of Education will be conducting its regular meeting at 7:30 on Monday, March 24, 2014, at the Hillsborough High School Auditorium, 466 Raider Boulevard. Action will be taken at this meeting. Call to order, please.
You can read the next thing.
In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on March 20, 2014, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News.
May I have a roll call?
Surely. Ms. Bogaczewski?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Dudda? Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Ms. Swanson?
Here.
And Mr. Kintz? We have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmoud. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from the portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows. The matters to be discussed are Hillsborough Education Association grievances, a personnel matter. Matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion, please?
Summons.
Lorraine, can I have a second?
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second is Dana. Okay, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Opposed abstentions?
Okay, we are now in closed.
We are now in closed session. We will be back in session at 7:30 PM.
Okay. Good job.
And we are back. Can I please have a roll call, Mr. Mahmoud?
Surely. Mrs. Bogaczewski? Okay. Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Dudda? Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Ms. Swanson?
Here.
And Mr. Kintz? We have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmoud. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Our correspondence is listed. I would like to just make an opening statement before moving to the Superintendent's Report. I want to thank everyone for attending this evening. As you can see, we are holding this meeting in the high school auditorium instead of our normal location, which is Otten Road School. Based on history to prior budget hearings, as a board, we felt that due to the sensitive issues that have come up during this year's budget process, we wanted to make accommodations so that members of our community could attend, and we, as a board, wanted to be prepared for what could potentially be a larger audience. So, thank you to the administration and staff who made the transition very easy this evening. So, Dr. Schiff, your Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my pleasure to share with you some good news from around the district. First of all, Otten Road Intermediate Schools' 5th grade teacher, Beth Raff, was announced as the National Liberty Museum 2013-2014 Teacher as Hero Award winner. The Teacher as Hero Award program is sponsored by State Farm and recognizes dedicated teachers who inspire and motivate our young people. They advocate for quality education, collaborate with colleagues, work with the community, show a sustained commitment to education, maintain a safe classroom that nurtures student growth, and teach an inclusive and thought-provoking curriculum. Ms. Raff's accomplishments will be honored at an award ceremony on Thursday, April 3, at the National Liberty Museum in Philadelphia. Let's give our best congratulations to Ms. Raff. We have some more good news. Recently, the radio station, Magic 98.3, announced its annual list of teachers who make magic. Twenty-four teachers from central New Jersey were chosen to receive this honor. Four of these teachers were from Hillsborough schools. The following teachers will be honored at an award ceremony to be held on April 30 in Edison. Ms. Christine Madrasia, a 1st grade teacher at Amsterdam Elementary School, let's give her a hand. Nancy Patrick, 6th grade teacher at Otten Road School, congratulations Nancy. Ms. Mary Beasley, an instructional assistant at Hillsborough Elementary School. And Ms. Laurel Soak, an art teacher, also at Hillsborough Elementary School. Our sincere appreciation for the hard work of all of our award winners, and congratulations to one and all. I'd also like to make a quick statement that something that I was actually involved with this morning, I had the opportunity to testify in front of our Senate Education Committee concerning the CUSAC, which is our annual monitoring program. I will submit to the full board my testimony from this morning, but basically, it speaks to the fact that Hillsborough, as well as other high-performing districts, do not need to go through a monitoring process that takes many, many hours out of the days for our central office administration, our building-level administration, and indeed, some teachers as well, when our performance is rated as high performing. So, what we're asking our legislators to do is to pass a law allowing high-performing districts to be monitored every seven years, rather than every three years. So, with that, it was a very interesting morning, very exciting, and I hand it over to you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff, and good work representing, you know, our district. I think that's very important, that you have voiced on in Trenton, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on to the approval of minutes. Does?
Yes, we're approving the March 10 regular meeting.
We are going to approve the March 10, 2014, regular public meeting minutes. Does, can I have a motion, please?
Summons.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Before we move on to committee reports as the chair this evening, I just wanted to make a brief statement. There was a meeting on Friday, March 21, to discuss some questions surrounding the township reassessment. The following people were in attendance. Tom Kintz, who's our president of the board, myself, Greg Gillette, Dr. Schiff, Anthony Ferrera, who's our township administrator, Frank Delkor, who's a township committeeman, Carl Sarachi, who's a township committeeman, Rob Vance, who's their Somerset County Tax Administrator, Betsy Hollenbach, Assistant Tax Administrator, Deb Blaney, Tax Administrator, and Nancy Hable, the CFO for Hillsborough Township. I would first like to thank everyone for taking the time to participate in this meeting. The meeting was a very productive session, and I would like to clear up some of the questions and inaccurate statements that were made regarding the reevaluation process and program. Hillsborough recently started a program where portions of the town would be reevaluated in order to try and keep taxes on property as close as possible to reflect current market conditions. While it was originally thought that the $120 million drop in ratables was largely due to appeals, this was inaccurate. Only 17 million were due to appeals. While the township will reassess annually, they only inspect 25% of the properties in the community each year. The devaluation does not affect the budget or the tax levy. I know that this board, the administration, township administration, and township committee look forward to continued good relations, as well as the ability to have open dialogue when questions arise. And if anyone has any questions from the board, we can discuss it at the appropriate time during the meeting. So, with that, I'd like to move on to committee reports, and actually, I think it's appropriate to ask Mr. Gillette to start first.
Okay, let me gather my stuff. Thank you. Operations Committee met on, well, March, I'm sorry, I have different notes. On March 12, and the major bulk of the meeting was a discussion with our professionals for the, thank you, for the, I'm reading through the bottom of my progressive glasses, darn it, was a, it was a discussion of the ESIP program. As you know, last year, we entered into an agreement with Honeywell to develop an energy savings improvement plan. We had a meeting on, our Operations Committee meeting on March 12. We had members of, from Honeywell there, as long as our bond counsel, our architect, and Mary Lyons from Phoenix Advisors, who is going to work on the financing with us. Just to give you a quick recap, there's approximately $16 to $17 million worth of improvements that are going to take place at our schools. This will not cost the taxpayer anything. It's going to be financed through a 15-year bond issue. The debt service each year on that 15 years of that bond will be paid for by, through the energy savings that we will generate by having a more efficient, energy-efficient school district. Most of the energy savings is going to come by replacing just about every light fixture in the entire district, inside and out, with LED lights. We're also going to replace some ventilators at the high school, window replacements in the 100 and 200 wing at the high school. Also interesting, I didn't really know that we were going to do this at first, but it makes a lot of sense, we're also going to be changing many of the bathroom and water fixtures throughout the district to save water, which will also save us some money. And as a benefit, as an added benefit to all of this, we're going to be able to provide cooling in the 100 and 200 wing of the high school and on the second floor of ARRIS. The great thing about this project is that it's going to start soon, we're probably going to get the financing, we're probably going to vote on this at the second April meeting. We'll begin working on the financing right away, projects to start this summer and be completed within 14 to 16 months, the whole $17 million worth of projects, which is tremendous. So, that took up the bulk of the meeting. After that, we did continue discussing some aspects of the budget. We're still looking for ways to save some money for the budget, ways that we can reallocate. Some of the things we discussed were the before care and after care at our schools. Currently, before care and after care is run by, at most of the buildings, Catholic charities, and at least one of the buildings, the jointure. Currently, this is sort of just a reciprocal, reciprocal agreement where they come in, provide the before care and after care, we don't, we don't charge them anything to run this program, we don't make anything from it, they just kind of, they just do it. We're thinking about possibly having a bidding process for next year, where we would look for responsible bidders to provide that service. In other words, we would take like the highest responsible bidder, if they're, if they're making a profit from this endeavor. Possibly, there are other providers in this sector that would like to be able to provide that to us. And also, we looked at some other, besides that, we looked at, continue to look at transportation, savings that we can make in transportation, and some other areas. Important thing to know is that we're going to meet again in Operations Committee after Dr. Schiff does a little work, we're going to, he told me in the hallway before that we're pulling things together, I think those are his exact words. We're probably going to meet next week, I believe, or early in the week after that, and we should have more for you on the budget at that time, from operations standpoint. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Mr. Pulsofer, you're up.
The Human Resources Committee meeting was held last, excuse me, last Thursday, March 20. We discussed the background information pertaining to two grievances that were heard tonight, and that was all. Thank you.
Oh, that was nice and easy. Thank you, Mr. Pulsofer. Mrs. Haas, you are next with education.
I wish my report could be as short as Christmas, but I guess that will never happen. The Education Committee met on March 18 for a wonderful meeting between myself and Dr. Swanson, and we discussed, our major issues to discuss were the one-to-one technology initiative, and we went through five different scenarios of either providing enough computers to be able to do our assessments at the minimum, three other scenarios that involved some grades and not other grades, and a fifth scenario of all full one-to-one implementation in this budget year. What we found when we cut through all of the ancillary technology expenditures was that there was a difference of $300,000 for, between doing the minimal to the maximal. So, we also reviewed the 23-page report that was done by my buddy, Dr. Antounis and Joel Handler, indicating reams of research in relation to the value of technology in the schools. So, we, as a committee, looked at various budget reduction scenarios, we talked about possible insurance fees, we talked about technology personnel, and we talked about leasing versus purchasing. We looked at a variety of other options for saving money and doing it in the most efficient way possible, and the committee unanimously recommends to the full board that the technology budget should maintain the superintendent's recommendation, or Scenario 1 on the new chart that was submitted to the rest of the board. The less fun discussion was once again talking about our calendar for 2014-15, which I hope we're never going to discuss again, but unfortunately, I think we might. What we've basically done is we've revised the calendar for 2014-15 to create earlier makeup days, if there are hurricanes or other kind of weather events, or even water main breaks, or whatever, before the true winter. So, what we have now is if we have an emergency closing during the month of October or before, the makeup day will be November 4, which is now scheduled for an in-service day. If we have an emergency closing prior to December 19, the makeup day will be January 2. If we have an emergency closing prior to January 5, the makeup day will be January 19. If we have an emergency closing, I mean, basically, what we're doing is with two weeks' notice, we will be able to use holidays and various other in-service days prior to the use of the two days that are being built into the, built into the calendar. So, going on with that, we're trying to preserve what we lost this year, which was practically every vacation day that we have to look forward to. So, this calendar also eliminates the names of holidays due to certain sensitivities that have been expressed to us over the years. And Mr. Gillette, despite the fact that you weren't at the meeting this year, we've made the half-day comment, we've turned the half-day into a four-hour session because that is more accurate, and it's something you've been talking about for years. So, we finally got there, and that was the story on that. And then, other discussion items, thankfully, were new novels, we approved Outliers for AP Language and Composition, and we approved David and Goliath. Both of these books are nice, short, nonfiction stories, very, very nice, keeping with the common core, encouraging kids to be reading more in the nonfiction realm, and so that's Outliers and David and Goliath. We also approved the Summer Read Animal-Vegetable Miracle by Barbara Kingsolver, which replaces the Poisonwood Bible, by the same author. And in the curricular area, we approved general music for kindergarten transitional primary and general music, grade 2 and 3, and a new course proposal in the special education area, geophysical science for grades 10 through 12. Did I leave anything out? Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas, and thank you to the Education Committee and to the administration for giving us such a thorough calendar with exact descriptions on what will happen, shall we have another winter that we hopefully won't, like we did this year, so, thank you for taking the time to do that. And I will speak as chair of the Governance Committee. We met on the evening of March 19, continued our discussion and dialogue about board members becoming certified or master board members. I can see everybody is very excited about that prospect here, but I just would like to continue to remind you that it is important for us to continue our education as board members as things are constantly changing. We would also like to propose a board retreat, and I think Dr. Schiff will be sending out some kind of a, an email to the board to see whether or not this would be better suited for the summer months or the fall months potentially, because the goal is to have 100% attendance. That is obviously what we would like to see happen. And the bulk of our meeting, which we spent reviewing multiple bylaws and policies, what we're doing is taking section by section and trying to update them as needed, and again, I encourage the board to please look at our bylaws and policies, and if you see anything that calls, that you're drawn to, that you would like to have reviewed prior to what we're scheduled to review, I would encourage that feedback as well. And that's it for Governance Committee. So, right now, we're going to move on to comments from the board on any new business. Do we have any? You have to excuse me, as we're used to being in a little bit of a semicircle, so that's why, I can't see anyone, so you just have to be patient with me right now. Okay, seeing none, I'd like to move on to comments from the public on the 2014-2015 budget. Please note that the microphone and stand are over in this corner over right here at the auditorium. We ask that you please speak your name and address for the record before making your statements, so, Mr. Blevins.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Dana Blevins, President of the Hillsborough Education Association. I'd like to speak tonight again about the tentative budget that was proposed at the last board meeting. Part of that tentative budget included privatization of the nighttime custodial staff, along with the privatization of all substitutes in the district, and we had spoken at that, I had gotten up and spoken that time, that we would like to see that not part of the tentative budget. And the ensuing discussion that happened among the board, I believe there were four individuals on the board that expressed their concern with privatization and their unwillingness to do that, and many others expressed similar, similar thoughts. The HEA did, in good faith, negotiate a contract that settled this year, and in keeping with that good-faith negotiations, we would ask that any further reductions in the budget would not come on the backs of our members. So, I would formally like to ask the board if it would be possible to take a vote tonight to actually take privatization off of the table so that we can go forward and find other ways to settle the financial situations we need to without the privatization issue haunting all of us. Thank you very much.
Mr. Blevins, I just wanted to address your comments really quick, if you don't want to. I think that right now, as this board and the public is aware, we are having very difficult conversations, very difficult conversations, and right now, I think we would be remiss to take a vote on your proposal. While I completely understand where you're coming from, right now, we need to look at every option, as painful and as hard as it is, right now, we have to look at every option. And I can assure you that this administration and this board take that responsibility very seriously, and we are thinking of every single scenario that we can right now. And I thank you for your comments.
And I appreciate your comments, as I'm sure we'll be seeing each other next board meeting as well.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Christine Kirsch, 466 Raider Boulevard. I teach here. I'm here to tell you a true story about a woman I am good friends with. Were you to meet this woman, you would not be able to see that she has a disability, as she has one of those disabilities that doesn't show. And the disability is, in my opinion, because of custodial privatization in the school system near us. This is the story. When there was no position for her at the school where she taught, she was hired in another New Jersey district at their high school. One morning, on her way into the building, she slipped on a patch of ice at the corner of the building. She fell and fractured her skull. As time has progressed, it has become clear that when she fell, she severed her olfactory nerve and a cranial nerve. She will never be able to smell or taste again. She's in her early 40s. One of the reasons other teachers in the building say my friend fell is because of privatization of the custodial staff. It was the first year. The custodians that had worked at the school for years knew that this particular spot under the eaves got icy every winter. They were always careful to sand and salt that area very well. But this was the first year that the district had privatized their custodians. The people that knew the intricacies of where extra salt and sand was needed were no longer at the school. Because of privatization, I believe that my very good friend has permanently lost all smell and taste. A district within New Jersey now faces a massive lawsuit that will take years to settle because of this permanent injury. My friend teaches in another district now, but it is very difficult to teach family and consumer science that involves cooking or baking when you can't smell. She has no way to sense by smell whether her students are burning something or if something smells nice. She cannot rely on her sense of smell at home to tell if her own house is on fire. My friend knows I'm speaking with you tonight. I'm sorry I cannot mention her name or the district she is suing, but we don't want to do anything that might jeopardize the lawsuit. Please do not privatize our evening custodial staff. They know the school, they've built the relationships necessary for a smooth running of the school with outside groups, and yes, I'm sure that they also know where the icy spots are outside of our schools that need that extra bit of salt and sand. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Henry Goody. I live in 16 Laurel Drive. I am a teacher of this district, a parent, as well as a resident. I've come tonight to express my concern regarding the possible privatization of our nighttime custodial staff and substitute teachers. I've taught in Hillsborough for 10 years, and what drew me to this district was a sense of community that was apparent in our schools. The pride and investment that was clearly visible in the actions of all staff members impressed me and instilled a desire to emulate this devotion in my own practice. This feeling of community also led me, also led to my decision to move to Hillsborough seven years ago. I am proud to say that my daughter will be educated in this school district, surrounded by many of the same professionals that impressed me 10 years ago. Now, I understand that there are challenging times in education, and I certainly do not envy your task of creating a budget. At first glance, the possibility of privatizing aspects of Hillsborough staff does appear to solve a fiscal problem, but I ask you to consider the myriad of unforeseen problems which it may also create. A privatized staff is one that has no real investment in our school or community. Many times, privatized workers perform their job to the letter of their contracts because ultimately, we will get what we pay for. Our current custodial staff consistently goes above and beyond the definition of their jobs. They are part of the schools, members of the Hillsborough community, and take pride in ensuring that our school district remains one of the best in the state. The same cannot be said for a privatized workforce. Beyond the aforementioned issues, I ask you to consider the possible unforeseen ramifications of privatized workers within our schools. Surrounding school districts have implemented similar plans in an attempt to save money and have faced issues such as increased theft of school property, inappropriate interactions between privatized workers and students, and the use of banned chemicals to clean classrooms. These problems have no place in Hillsborough. That is not Hillsborough. I appreciate and understand the physical obstacles facing our school district, but I ask you to reconsider privatization as a solution. While this move may solve some immediate problems, it may undoubtedly create others. The Hillsborough School District is a sum of many parts, all of which make our schools and towns special. To alter or remove one of these parts is to change that sum in total. I, for one, do not want to see this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Marissa Sladic, and I'm at 681 Dover Court, Unit E. I stood before you on January 6, asking for clarification of the budget and the process of making the budget. I asked where money was hiding. I was told my H-PAT co-chair and I could schedule a meeting. I was told my H-PAT co-chair and I could schedule a meeting to discuss where the money went, as there was a significant amount of money that was not accounted for. I waited for the meeting, waited, waited, and I'm still waiting. I attended a meeting last month, where I was told there would be no such meeting. I am once again asking, according to the 2013-2014 budget, the district spends $13,624 on every student to meet their needs. In addition to this, the district receives $4,516,286 in state aid for special education students, and an additional $1,272,638 money from the federal government for IDEA. New Jersey Council for Developmental Disabilities states that for this budget, each student receives an additional $14,929. And those who have extraordinary needs will receive an additional $40,000. For the 2014 budget, the state aid will give an additional $15,337 per student who has special needs, and an additional $45,000 for those who have extraordinary needs. You know, I might not be a math teacher, but this really looks like an everyday math problem here. It looks like the current budget for the 2012-2013 school year says special education students receive $8,913,146. As there are approximately 1,100 students in the district receiving special education services, I am confused as to why there is $9 million unaccounted for. The money should be more along the lines of $16,421,900. If you add in the IDEA money, the money, the number actually goes up to $17,694,538. Yet, the proposed 2014-2015 has a decrease in spending for the special education budget. There's no specific number outlined, it just says there will be a decrease. You, Dr. Schiff, said on a budget presentation on March 10th, that by managing cost, you had to cut special education. I'm asking once again, where's that money, and where's it going to? Is this the new everyday math way of doing budgets? It's really disheartening to hear that the special education budget needs to be cut to balance the 2% cap, knowing that this is free money that you do not need to generate from the taxes. This money is, like I said, not generated from the tax base. How can you cut money that is received to you for free? How do you cut something that you don't have to, that you don't have to pay for? Where's that money going? And where is the federal money and the state money going that you're receiving, because it's not for our children? If you're cutting more now, where's that additional $9 million? In addition, the proposal to privatize substitutes and long-term substitutes is rather frustrating for us as parents as well. How can you make sure that those who will be hired will be qualified? How can you make sure that those who will be hired will have the same set of skills that are in the, the teachers and staff that are used now from the pool of special, or from the pool of substitute, substitutes? When issues arise, who will they report to? How many parents do you know of that have had issues with, say, I don't know, the privatizing of busing? Because obviously that's gone well, right? So, I'm looking at what you've said. $130 is the proposal for long-term substitutes. How many people do you know of that would be willing to work for 130 days for a long-term job, doing exactly what every other teacher would do? Lesson planning, doing grades, doing conferences, phone calls, late-night grading? Are you really going to expect to get a high-quality person to do all those things? Do you really think that, that this is an appropriate recommendation? A few years ago, you suggested to privatize the aides. We, as a community, came together, we rallied, and we, we made our voices known that this was not something that we agreed upon. So, why is it okay to do this with the substitutes, long-term substitutes and custodians within our district? As the law states, and you have been very, very, very open with explaining that you have to use the lowest bidder. So, by using the lowest bidder, again, are you getting high-quality people, people who are invested in our town, our district, and our schools? As I've said before, privatizing of buses obviously has not done well this year. I mean, there's no contracts that have been needing to be ended, no bus drivers who have showed up, say, you know, the first day of school, saying that they didn't feel like doing their job, no children who are lost. Obviously, the privatizing of buses has done well, so that's what we should do, follow the lead, and privatize other staff, right? Thank you.
Mrs. Sladek, I would like to address some of the concerns that you, you brought to the public's attention. I'm not sure where you're getting your facts, but let, let me give you some facts. Our special ed costs are increasing above 5.6%, I believe. We are also adding five additional teachers, special education teachers, to address the needs of the children in this district. To even insinuate that there is money that is missing or is hiding is just factually incorrect. I think it's very important that when you come to a public microphone, that you have your facts straight. We'll be more than happy to sit down with you and to walk you through that process. In fact, before you leave today, you and Mr. Mahmood can schedule an appointment, and we will go line by line and share with you exactly where the spending is going. It is not that the spending is decreasing, quite the opposite, it is increasing, and we'll be happy to clarify your understanding. Thank you.
Before, before I leave, it was clearly said to, to the entire town on your, your proposal that you did, that you, that was videotaped. I was not here at that meeting, however, I did see the video, and it was said that you were cutting the cost by cutting the special education process.
No, that's incorrect. What I said was that there was a program, that was an extracurricular program, that was reduced. We had people that came to the, the microphone at our last meeting, indicating that they would like the board to restore it. That was a new program last year that was funded through a block grant, the title, "The IDEA Grant." As a result of the sequester, not as a result of concerns we have about our local property taxes, this is the sequester at the federal level, our title monies were reduced. As a result, that program was reduced. I'm actually very optimistic that we will be able to have additional fundings in IDEA to fund that program.
Dr. Schiff, if you could help me out here, I, I think, and, well, in, in one of the things that we've, we've put out, we talked about, we talked about the income levels as to where we get. And one of the things that was shown on one of those presentations was a decrease in funding of, by 15%, or what looks like that. But I believe, and I'm hoping you can fill in the blanks here, but I believe that's because we are told by the government to assume a 15% decrease in the amount of money we will actually get. Whether, regardless of what we may get in the future, when we set the budget, we're supposed to assume a 15% decrease. Is that correct? And, and I think that may be confusing some people. If you look at our income, it looks like we're spending less, but that's really just us budgeting income 15% less as directed by the government.
That, that is correct. For both IDEA, as well as our title funding, we are required to budget at 85% of our, of our prior years, of our prior year's grant. The, the year prior to that was the sequester year, which was the last year, and we were required to budget at 75%. Now typically, when we receive our IDEA and our federal grants, we actually gain that back. So even though we budget 85%, we're able to get close to 100%. However, during the sequester year, we remained at 75%, and that's why that particular program was reduced.
Thank you. I'd like to get back to the public comment.
Good evening. Maria DeLucia, 122 South Triangle Road. I'm also, I should say, the second VP of the Hillsborough Education Association. As you may remember, I began this year having trouble sleeping. And I am yet again now having difficulty sleeping with the concerns I have with some of the choices you are considering. Beyond the firing of possibly 35 of your nighttime custodial staff, my concerns are about the loss of control that you, as a board, will have as who is, about who are in our buildings. You will no longer have control over the hiring, the discipline, or the firing of the privatized staff. I'm concerned about the high turnover rate. Currently, your employees are long-term employees, and they tend to stick around for quite a while, and they take great, great pride in the buildings in which they work in. I do not believe you would find the same pride and long-term employment in a privatized staff. The security, I'm concerned over what type of security clearance these employees will have to be in our buildings. And you may think that that's not as much a concern, because our students won't be in the buildings, but that is far from the truth. And our evenings are, our buildings are full of students. They're there for, from the community, they're there for sporting events, theater events, after-school activities. These are valued employees, longstanding valued employees. And I would like, just like to address a comment that you made that was on your budget presentation, in which you referred to these employees as nighttime cleaning staff. I would hope that that was not an effort to devalue their, the efforts and their, what they bring to us, but they are so much more than cleaning staff. Yes, they clean, they organize, they work on replacing our ceiling tiles, they set up for events in the evening, they set up for events on the weekends, they're there for activities, they monitor our schools, and they help provide security in our schools. And may I assure you that they help with security in our schools, and they often are getting, sending people out of the buildings that have no business being there. They help provide security against vandalism, and they, they're there for, they come in early when overtime is needed, they work on the weekends, and they provide the cleaning and everything else that is needed. They are much more than cleaning, nighttime cleaning staff. And I just wanted to say that they really and truly are vital to the running of our after-school sports programs, activities, and our buildings. And please consider all of these when you're making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Samuel Fister, 11 Shady Brook Court. I am currently a senior at Hillsborough High School in this building here. I've been in this district for 13 years now. I'm also here to talk about the privatization of the possible nighttime staff, and I believe it is also the substitute teachers. I apologize in advance, I'm not completely specifically aware of the actual legislation. I'm not aware of the actual changes being made. I would like to, so perhaps I can meet with someone afterwards, and I can be made aware more of that. I also don't mean to lower the quality or the job that a private staff would do, more so than, than what we have right now, but I am here to talk about the perks of keeping the current staff that is currently here in the high school and all the schools. As one of the previous speakers said, these, these staff members aren't just cleaning staff, they are here to help set up in the mornings, they help with various activities, they protect the students in all sorts of, in sorts of ways, like, like the previous speaker said, and they know our school. They know the stage, they can help, they, they're the ones who set up the sets during different productions, they're here during after-school activities. They're essential staff, just as essential to the functioning of the education and the forwarding of the education of our students, just as much as the teachers are. If anything, I think there should be more investment into this field of education in our facilities. They not only go, these people not only go beyond what they're required to do, they stay overtime, but they're not actually getting the aid that they need to do these jobs. Being in this school for the last four years, I know that oftentimes, a heater will go out and it won't be fixed for a month. And that was especially bad this winter. A school of 2,400 students, such as this high school, is, can't run on a staff that isn't fully equipped. And so not only should we keep the current staff, but I would encourage the giving of more aid to these staffs, the giving of more tools, the forwarding, they're just making their job a little easier by providing more tools for them to do their job in a more efficient manner, thus making the school a little more efficient. I'd also like to talk about the possible substitute teacher privatization. I, I hope I speak on behalf of all students when I say that. At one point in our educational careers in the grade system, that we've been affected in a positive way by a substitute teacher. I know I have. I have a specific memory of a substitute teacher in first grade, giving a rousing speech at the beginning of class, and it's really molded me into the person I am today. Last week, I had that very same substitute after 12 years. I don't know if I've had that substitute every year, but I can definitely say that I've seen him around the building. He's been the same, the same staff that's been here for 12 years. They've gotten to know the students, and the students have gotten to know them. Overall, also, long-term staff, I believe that was another one that would also fall under privatization. I've had two examples in the last four years of long-term staff that has filled in for full-time teachers, who are now fully employed by the school system. Sophomore year, my English teacher left on maternity leave in, I believe it was November or December. A long-term sub filled in, and to this day, I still pass her every day in the hallway. She is now a full-time teacher at this school. I don't believe that would be the case under a private company who would be issuing us substitutes. They would be issuing a substitute, and then they'd go off to another job elsewhere when their tenure, when, excuse me, not their tenure, but when their job is up here. We would not see them again. To this day, I still say hello to that teacher every morning when I pass her in the hallway. She has made an impact on my life. And another, early in my freshman year, my teacher was having difficulties with her medical situation, so they hired an aide to her classroom. To this day, that aide is still a teacher here, and next year, she's actually becoming a full-time enrolled teacher at the high school. I think a substitute and the essential staff, such as the custodial and the maintenance staff, are essential to the education of our students, and I think if we're going to get rid of them, then we're also going to lower the quality of our education in our system. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any further public comment on the 2014-2015 budget. I just want to take a moment to say thank you to everyone who got up to speak tonight. I will again repeat myself by saying that we are faced with making very difficult choices. None of them are easy, none of them are pretty. The superintendent and administration here has been tasked by this board to come up with every single scenario, so that we can study every, every case, best and worst. So, it is not an easy process. I want to also encourage the public to please take the time and come to a board meeting and speak your mind on this process as well, because these are your tax dollars. So, now it is time to move on to the action agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education, to approve travel and related expenses, to approve the HIB investigation, lest the revised curriculums.
I have a comment on the action agenda. We thought it was separated out. We thought that was just for the budget.
Yeah, you know, it says, yeah, actually, she has a chance to go.
So I apologize. Before we move on to the action agenda, is there any public comment on the action agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm short. I'm Amy Salinger. I work at Otten Road School here in Hillsborough. We just have a question, a clarification question on the calendar that was in the attachments on the agenda. On, I don't have to, it looks like three of the days that are going to be four-hour sessions. It says four-hour session and slash, four-hour staff in service, which, we just wanted some clarification, because that would take us beyond the contracted school hour days.
Yes, there's no, yeah, there's, there's no motivation to extend anyone's time beyond that, and we'll make the correction.
So it would be the ex- So it would be, the expectation would be to.
Regular day, but it's going to be half-day for kids, half-day for staff. But there wanted to be specificity that the half-hour day for students is a four-hour day.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My C was part A and I think we just skipped right to part B. Were we having a new business section at this meeting?
I, I had called for public comment on new business and seeing none, we moved on to public comment on the 2014-15 budget. However, sir, I will allow you to speak.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. My name is Joshua Prince, I live at eighty-seven Amwell Road in Millstone, New Jersey, actually, to all of those out there who, I also live in Millstone. This past, well, not this past weekend, on March first and second, Team Seventy-Five Robotics Team, which is based in Hillsborough High School, had our Mount Alb District Competition. Some of you might have heard about our success there, so I would like to go into that right now. At this competition, we had our usual impact in the stands, being one of the loudest teams, partly due because we are one of the biggest teams at those competitions every year. And beyond our cheering though, our team encountered many successes at the competition. First, during the qualifying events, we were ranked the number-three team going into the elimination matches, very successful, we were able to tame the number-three seed out of eight. And also during this event, we had our, our eighth, or sixth annual bike build. And what the bike build is, is every year at one of our district qualifying events, our team will partner with a various child-based organizational charity. This year it was the United Way Foundation, and we donate bikes to underprivileged kids who would not normally have the opportunity to get a bicycle. This year we donated twelve bikes, six to boys and six to girls, to various kids from the United Way Foundation. Also at this event, we had a successful year with our robot, something which hadn't happened since 2007. We won our actual district competition, very big event for us. And through this, we have qualified for the Mid-Atlantic Regional. This is both Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware. And after that competition, we were ranked the number-two team in all of New Jersey, Delaware, and Pennsylvania. So right now our robot is doing very well. And also at this competition, after winning the district champions event, we also won the Engineering Inspiration Award, which is considered the second most prestigious award that you can be awarded at these events. And what engineering inspiration is, is how our team inspires other kids in our community and beyond our community to join STEM fields, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics fields. And our team does that in a multitude of ways, including Technology Innovations Week and our partnership with the Girl Scouts and our WISE Initiative. And through all these programs, we regained the Engineering Inspiration Award and we have now qualified to also receive that award at the Mid-Atlantic Regional. So we had a very successful Mount Alb District Competition and we look forward to seeing everyone at the Bridgewater District Competition this weekend and hopefully at the Mid-Atlantic Regional and maybe even Nationals come April in St. Louis. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy am I that you were able to speak, so thank you very much. Always good news from our robot readers. Moving on to the action agenda, board members, we are going to comment as the action agenda comes up for call. So Dr. Schiff, please.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, the HIB investigation list, the revised curriculum as reported out of committee, as well as the new course proposal, novels, and summer read. Also approving the change of out-of-district placement, field trip destinations, disposal of textbook, overnight field trips, approving the district calendar, the submittal of a safety grant application for close to $25,000.
May I have, may I have a motion, please? Sub move. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none.
Oh, wait a second.
Sorry, Dr. Sosan.
Did you want to say something?
Did you want to say something?
No, I just wanted, nobody had a question on the calendar or everybody's?
That's why I didn't comment.
Everybody's all good, that's awesome. That's great, I'm, I'm happy about it. But I like to say something about it anyway.
Do we want to separate it out? Do the other board members have comment?
If everybody's good with it, we don't need to separate it, but I just want to make a comment on it. So I think Dr. Sosan and I both sort of had the same idea going into the calendar independently, that we would try to develop a list of days way in advance that we would use as, as makeup days for snow days. And those days included November fourth, January second, the Martin Luther King Day holiday, President's Day, and some of the usual suspects towards the end of the year if ever got that far, the teacher in-service days, et cetera. And to then use those days, the sort of the guiding principle was to use the days as needed as you go along in the calendar and always holding the two built-in snow days until you got to February first or something, to not wind up on February first and realize not only have used all of your snow days, but now you've also used every other possible day and the in-service days and now you're cutting into the spring break time. So that was the guiding principle behind it. I think it has worked well. Now, our, our initial, on Education Committee, I think our initial idea was just have a list of days and give the general idea about how they're going to be used. But as we talked about it, and I guess at the last meeting that I did not attend, it was, it was decided there'd be a little more specificity on exactly how they would be used, which is fine. There's still a disclaimer that the Board of Education reserves the right to change the calendar at any time, that's, that's always in there for extreme emergency. But I think it's fine having the specific examples of when the days would be used. And what this does is I think it puts something like eight, essentially like eight or more makeup days into the calendar. And seeing as we used eight, and we had eight snow days this year on a very extreme year, this puts those days in, and you still, still have spring break if it's needed. So up to maybe like twelve or thirteen days if needed. So I think it worked out well. I'd like to thank Dr. Sosan and Mrs. Haas for figuring out this calendar, nice job.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette.
Jen, can I just, from a visual perspective?
Yes.
September fourth is highlighted as like second and third, which will make you think that we're actually closed even though that's the first day of school.
You know, I, I agree that it's a little difficult with the gray because it's a light gray and a dark gray.
Well, no, the in-service days are white with just a bold font.
I think it just prints that way.
It's just, so it just looks like, it's just difficult to read.
Okay, we'll, we'll clarify, but in terms of the substance of, of the calendar, the...
It's just visual.
Yeah, we, we can, we can make it more apparent. I can see how that can be confusing.
Jen. So from aesthetics, we'll, we'll, administration will look into changing that. And Dr. Sosan?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I think it's just printing that way because when I look at it electronically, they are shaded a little darker, so I think that, that's fine. My comment had more to do with the verbiage at the bottom. I think there are some corrections that need to be made there, not in terms of what days will be used when, but when specifically the two, the two built-in snow days would be used.
If they weren't consumed?
Well, no. When they would be used, right now it says if we exceed eight emergency closings, days will be made up over spring break. But right now it implies that all of the potential days off or in-service days would be used prior to utilization of the two built-in snow days. And I think we had determined that if we get to the point of, after Martin Luther King Day, of ha, of having continual snow days, that we would utilize those snow days prior to moving, yeah, utilizing the in-service days or spring break. So right, right now there's nothing to indicate that. And then the actual words that say if we exceed eight emergency closings, days will be made up and taking spring, spring break, we may not actually utilize eight days, but they may have passed. All opportunities to take those days may have passed. So I think we just need to straighten that up a little bit. But I don't, I don't think that needs to be done tonight for us to actually vote on the calendar for clarifying things.
Correct.
And, and then my only other comment is that I know we talked about it early on, actually before we, we've been talking about this calendar for some time, as Dr. Schiff knows very well and Judy has attested to. In the previous iteration of the Education Committee, which did not include Mr. Gillette but included Mrs. Lay, Mr. Kins, Judy and I, Mrs. Haas and I, we had discussed whether or not we wanted to have a six, a potential six-day weekend if we did not utilize the built-in snow days. And I, I really, knowing that we did that several years ago and, and the state of both the students' minds and the teachers' minds coming back and the parents' minds, because it was very difficult for me to actually get my kids and tell them it was worthwhile to go to school when we spent a beautiful weekend at the pool and drove down to the beach. I think we might want to revisit that in term, we, we were so busy trying to figure out what are the emergency closing days were going to be, we didn't really discuss that again. I would prefer to have Friday, you know, the two Fridays off in June rather than make a six-day Memorial Day weekend. Some people may disagree with me, but I just know how difficult it was to get back in the swing of school and, you know, for the, for the parents and the kids previously. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Dr. Sosan.
Does that change, does that change?
Are we okay to proceed, Dr. Schiff? Okay. So we are voting to approve a one through A-12 as listed in the agenda. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Sosan?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Madam President, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm, I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources to approve the resolutions as listed, the retirements of Elaine Corvelli, ESL teacher at Wood Fern who has been employed with us since 1984, Dee Poulsen, ASI teacher at Amsterdam School who's, who's worked with us since 1988. We thank both of them for their service to our district and our community. Approve the resignations as listed, group contract changes, revise leaves of absence, revise long-term substitutes, approve the leaves of absence as listed, revised appointments, and approve the appointments for the instructional assistant, nursing personal aide, transportation aide, co-curricular advisors, mentors, substitutes, extra period coverage revised, and approve payment for CPI training. Approve group changes as listed. And that's all I have.
Actually, before I make...
We need a motion before we can start. Oh, have to be a motion before discussion?
Okay. It is there. What we discussed in the closed session, board members, is covered under B-1.
Oh, under B-1? So it's going to be just B-1?
It's actually attachment B-1.1. I just want to make note of that on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Uh-huh, gotcha.
Okay. So everybody on the same page here? So may I have a motion to approve B-1 through, excuse me, B-11 as listed in the agenda?
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, I move that the board approve items B-1 through B-11 as listed.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? No? Okay. Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
And Ms. Sosan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmood.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of Operations to approve monthly financials, bills lists, line item transfers, transportation route renewals for 2014 summer ESY program. Approve the revised bylaws as reported out of the Governance Committee. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Can I have a motion to approve C-1 through C-5 as listed in the agenda?
On behalf of the Operations Committee, I move the whole Operations Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood. Oh, sorry, my fault, my fault. Any discussion on operations? I just want to move things along. I just want to get to the old business part, I guess. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Sosan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmood. At this time, I'd like to open the floor up for public comment on any old business. Okay. Seeing none. Do we have any comments from the board on any old business?
I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted to say also thank the township professional staff, the county tax administrator, the township committee, many of some in the audience tonight for meeting with us last week. It was very informative. As, as board members are well aware, I take the budget very seriously, I work hard on it at, as a chair of the, first the Finance Committee, now the Operations Committee for each of the seven years that I've been on the board. We like to be very transparent and give the, the public all of the information and try to give it accurately. And when we don't give it accurately, I appreciate the chance to correct that. We try to give them the budget in, always in three ways. How much their tax rate will inevitably go up, how much the, it goes up by tax levy, whether we're, whether we're, and especially in the last several years where we've had first a four percent cap and then two percent cap, whether we're near the cap, above the cap, below the cap, and where we are in relation to that. And the third way, we try to give it by how much your taxes go up on the average home or a list of home prices. We give it every way, but the only real way to do it is to see what the tax rate is that we approve. Look at your little postcard that you get in the mail and find out what your, it says value on your home is, multiply it out. That's the best way to see what your taxes are going to be in the, in the coming year. Look at what they were last year and you'll find out for yourself exactly what your taxes are. And that's, so thanks again to the township and the county staff for helping us with that.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Yes, sir.
And also just, just to clarify for, for the public and the board, the ratables do not affect the tax levy and it does not affect our budget. The ratables are used to calculate the impact of the levy on an individual homeowner. So I appreciate Mr. Gillette's comments. I also had the pleasure of attending a meeting with township officials as well as the, the tax assessor who, who clarified some issues that we misrepresented at this day. And most importantly, the drop in the ratables of $120 million, only $17 million was, was done as a part of an appeal process. So that's very important and that helps us to understand better how the ratables impact the actual taxes that the average homeowner will pay. And we have very good relations with our tax assessor as well as the township CFO and the town administrator and, and we appreciate that clarification for us.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Is there any more comment from the board on old business? Mrs. Haas?
Actually, I have a few. I'd like to know what else was learned at this meeting about ratables and whether or not this is going to be a continuing trend, because a dip of $120 million of ratables is something that has not happened in my recollection and I would like to know if this is something that we have to look forward to for the, you know, coming years. Second of all, I'd like to know what's going on with the budget. Just because we have till April 28th, I think, I believe Damon made a point of saying that certain key issues in the budget can be discussed and taken either on or off the table. certain key issues in the budget can be discussed and taken either on or off the table at this point. So, how are we moving forward over the course of the next month to provide a budget that will satisfy everybody at this dais who has issues with certain things that are currently in the budget? Are we going to have one meeting of each committee and be done with it? Or is the Operations Committee going to come back with another proposed budget? What, what are we aiming at? Are we aiming to reduce the budget? Are we aiming to include or exclude certain things that have been discussed? What's going on?
Dr. Schiff, would you like to respond?
Sure. I think maybe Mr. Gillette and I can, can kind of tag team on this, on this answer. Greg and I have been discussing about adding additional meetings to the Operation Committee's agenda. We have had one round of, of discussions, continued discussions with each of the committees, HR, operations, and, and education. We anticipate a second meeting with each of those committees, as well as a third meeting, at least a third meeting with, with the Operations Committee. Basically, what we're currently doing is looking at possibilities for additional reductions in lieu of some of the privatization that was discussed, and we're currently in the process of, of doing that. And we will be presenting that information to each of the committees over the month. And then, Mr. Gillette, I think, to kind of wrap it up, as, as we pull these, these discussions together through the committees, that Operations would have a final meeting with recommendations to the full board. Am I...
No, that, that's correct. We also mentioned at some point, something that we haven't done in a couple of years now, committee of the chairs. Is that, is that correct, Dr. Schiff? Did you suggest that at some point? Is that still on the table?
It is.
As sort of a consolidation...
And it may be a good way to kind of pull that together, so that each of the committee chairs has a, has a seat at the table as we finalize recommendations for the 28th for a final budget.
I just wanted to say also that, um, to, can I address Judy at this point?
Sure.
Okay. Mrs. Haas, I, I, I think it was novel idea that Mr. Blevins came up with to have a vote on, just on aspects. I don't know that we've ever done that on this board. I don't, you know, we've always just had one, we've never taken anything off the table, in other words, till the final vote. But, I mean, I wouldn't be against having that vote if we tied it to saying that we're not going to increase the tax levy $1 above what we already approved. If we want to vote on both at the same time and say, okay, privatization's off the table, but we're not increasing the tax levy at all above what we already approved the tentative budget. I'd vote for that proposal, but I don't think anybody's going to, is going to propose that tonight. I think we're going to leave everything on the table until we, until we continue working on it.
And how are we going to whittle things down?
I believe it's...
Do you want more suggestions? Because I suggested many things last time.
I just want to speak for a moment and say, I think that each board member here made it very perfectly clear what their priorities were and what their expectations were when it came to the budget.
You really think so?
I, I would say that I know that, you know, for myself, I said I would not vote for anything over 2%, and I did not like the idea of privatization either.
Right.
But, however, I think right now, we have to go through the process of going through the, back to committee, looking at what the proposals are, coming back to Operations. I think we're going to have at least two, if not, you know, three more meetings. And I'm hoping that maybe at the next board meeting, that we can have, you know, more active, lively discussions as well in public, because I think the public deserves that as well. But I don't recall us ever putting a motion on the table saying that we're taking something off the table when we haven't even had the other options presented to us yet of what's out there in lieu of the privatization. So, I, I didn't, I didn't think that it was fair enough to try to do that this evening, because then where do you stop the conversation when somebody says, well, I want to take this off the table, I want to take, we can't have that conversation right now?
That's, that's the kind of work should be getting done in committee, but at the same time, our committees are not going to meet until after our next meeting, which will then leave us with one meeting on April 28th, at which we have to vote for the entire budget. And there might have been situations not relating to the tax levy number, but what is within the tax levy number of things that might be investigated that have not been investigated at all. Something might come out of left field. Somebody may have an idea for a new revenue. Where is that discussion taking place? Frankly, when everybody wanted to move the election to November, instead of the April budget vote, one of the comments that was made was that by having the budget set for the year and not having to worry about a budget failure, we would be able to get the jump on hiring and planning for summer construction and all of that stuff. But meanwhile, had we had the election this April, our budget would have been into the public for printing at this point, and we wouldn't be waiting till April 28th to discuss different alternatives for either keeping the budget where it is, bringing it down, bringing it up. But I would just like to have a sense of where we're going and when we are going to create whatever final document we're going to approve on April 28th. I would hate to wait till April 28th and find that there is dissension among members of the board. It would be nice if we could have a 9-0 vote on the budget.
I, I agree.
Yeah?
I agree with that. If it, if it's the, the will of the board, we can certainly move up the committee meetings, and we can talk with each of the chairs to see if that would be better timing with the idea of presenting some, some ideas for final budget at the next board meeting, so that further clarification, any adjustments to that could be made at that meeting, and then approve a final budget. The board does not have a choice not to approve? Well, I, I guess we do. If we don't approve a final budget at the end of April, then it goes to the county, Executive County Superintendent, and she will impose a budget on the district. However, I anticipate that we will, we will get there. If it's the will of the board, we can certainly reschedule the committee meetings to have those meetings prior to the next board meeting.
I think that's, I think that's a good option to put on the table, Dr. Schiff.
And we can, we'll contact the individual chairs and see about rescheduling.
Um, even though we had closed public comment, since we do have two Township Committee members in the audience, I thank you for attending. It's nice to have local elected officials here. I will make the exception to let Mr. Delkor speak about the ratables.
Thank you, but it does say comments from the board and public, so...
Yes.
Frank Delkor, resident, also a member of the Township Committee, and I just wanted to address the issue of, of the assessments and the ratable issue. I think Dr. Schiff and his comments, along with Madame Haley and Mr. Gillette, addressed it as well. But just to give some context around where we are here, really in 2013, we implemented a, an annual assessment program, in part to have a continuous upgrade, an update of our ratables in town and the value of assessed properties. During the course of that, which 2013 was the first year that we had done an ongoing update of the assessment since we did the revaluation back in 2010, the 2010 data was based upon market conditions from really 2008 through sometime in 2010. Obviously, the 2013 data was based upon ongoing current market data. So, what we found during the assessment process in 2013 was that there had been a decline based upon market conditions, and that's really solely the driver of the, of the issue, some of it, you know, small amount of appeals, but overall, it was a result of what we're seeing in the market. The assessors are, are evaluating all of our properties, assessing all the properties on an annual basis now, inspections, which is really driving some of the market conditions, and market data from sales and comparables is also driving some of the assessed value. So, that's really what's, what was the conditions that led to a drop in ratables, which as noted, was about a 2% in the overall ratable base last year. Whether that will continue in the future is really dependent upon what the market conditions are for comparables in town. We certainly hope that the conditions have stabilized and that home and market prices will, will begin to increase, but that is really driven by overall market conditions. So, I just wanted to make sure that we had that, and that this was discussed during the session. I'd like to thank the board members that attended and Superintendent Schiff for spending the time. I thought the county administrator did a very good job of explaining the situation, how the, how the annual assessment program worked, what its benefits were, and what we expect to see going, going forward, but there's certainly no guarantees about what the market conditions will be, and that's why we're continuing with the annual assessment program.
I think also a piece of good news that I learned from our meeting is that we have about $44 million worth of new ratables that came on the rolls this year as well.
That's correct, and we certainly, with some of the development, we would certainly expect some new ratables to continue on an ongoing basis.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, then, with $44 million worth of new ratables, the $120 million decrease in ratables is net of $44...
That's correct.
...million dollars. Are you concerned about that?
I'm certainly concerned about...
I mean, it just really surprises me that in what seems to be a market where real estate prices are going up and building has been pretty vigorous.
But recall, but recall, so I just want to make sure it's not an issue of whether mark, it's, it's from where they were at the last assessment.
Correct.
So, it was based upon 2008, 2009 data. If you recall, we've had a significant correction in the marketplace since that time. Some of that recovery has come back, but we're certainly not at 2008, 2009 market levels.
Yeah, but that, that's like $8,000 per household.
Something like that.
I mean, 120 million, 14, 14,500 units, households, whatever.
So, on a $400,000 home, yeah, that's 2%, correct.
And I guess, I'm, I'm concerned about any possibility of a trend.
Well, certainly, the trends are driven by what the market conditions are. So, we hope that the market stabilized, but certainly not unique to Hillsborough, that there's a real estate value decline over, over the last five years. There has been a significant recovery in some of those numbers, but not all the way back to where the assessed values were at some point, and that's why we're now continuing to do that ongoing assessment on an annual basis to ensure that we have current market conditions to set the valuations properly on an annual basis, so that the taxpayers are being assessed based upon the true market value of their, of their homes.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you very much, Mr. Delkor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Before I close the meeting, I just wanted to make one tiny statement. I think I can safely speak on behalf of the board and the administration when I say that our thoughts and prayers are with the Township of Edison as they cope with the loss of the James Monroe Elementary School after a devastating fire on Saturday evening. Even though there was an arrest today, the town is going to have a lot of healing to do, and it's a real shame that this happened. So, again, our thoughts and prayers are with the residents of Edison Township. And with that, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
Sub move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinctions, we are now, and thank you very much.